Alrighty, good morning Commissioners. And we're live and over to Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Musk. Good morning everyone and welcome to this warm Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is Chair Catherine Harrington and I'm joined by Commissioners Jerry Willie, Pam Threes, Nafisa Phi. And we are expecting Commissioner Roy Rogers to join us soon.
And Chair Harrington, it's basis.
What did I say?
I thought it wasn't.
Oh man.
I thought she was right.
I don't.
I was so. I was so excited I'm reading the numerals correctly that I screwed up. Yeah, really, we don't need to relive the whole last night. Okay. Just to, so that I don't forget it, there are a couple of updates to the business agenda. We have three proclamations, the presentation was added to item F two and we now have a change to the Clean Water Services. The first public hearing, we're going to have the public hearing on item F one. But we're then going to close the public hearing and come back to the resolution and order in June. So that we can update the program to extend the time period for residents to apply for the funding. So it sounds very useful. So thank you to staff for that update. Okay, next is Commissioner Update. Who would like to go first?
I will go first because I have a guest. Yes, Matt Craig, he's our active guy. We had a broadband advisory team, is that what that says?
Yes, that is correct.
Meeting yesterday and got updated on a couple of things going on with broadband. Lots of acronyms and stuff that I don't understand, but Matt does. I'm bringing in Matt so that I don't miscommunicate. So Matt, would you give us a quick?
I know enough to be dangerous, Commissioner. Thank you. For the record, Matt Craig, Washington County Economic Development Manager. So yes, Commissioner Willie and I were able to attend the NWBAT, the Northwest Broadband Action Team Meeting yesterday, which is a organization of elected leaders and others in the Coal Pack region. So that's Clotsetup County, Columbia County, Tillamook County and portions of Western Washington County. So the group gets together to talk about how they're pursuing broadband infrastructure and programming in the region. So yes, there was a lot, a lot going on in that meeting and there's a lot going on in broadband right now. So a few exciting announcements, one of them is, as I'm sure you're all aware, a lot of the transpacific cables that come across land in Oregon and connect here locally to Hillsborough. And Amazon is actually, they've got the boat out there and it's just about to make landing of a new transpacific cable that's gonna land in Tillamook County. And Commissioner Yamamoto talked about how Amazon is very interested in helping to, helping Tillamook County connect underserved parts of their community to broadband, also specifically interested in supporting cell service around Highway six. So we know that that is a somewhat dangerous highway and there's a big cell gap there. So if you get in a car accident, you have to, it's not a great situation. So Commissioner.
Our Sheriff's deputies too.
Yes, that's right. That's right. So thank you Chair Harrington. So Commissioner Yamamoto is gonna connect us to them because they're interested in a similar agreement or process on Highway six on the Washington County side. So that's very welcome, private partner that's interested in helping to support important goals for a community here in Washington County.
Do we need to provide local match for that?
I do not think so at this point and we'll explore more of what that looks like. The two proposals on the table there, as we understand it at this just preliminary level is that as they string the fiber across Highway six, they would have off ramps. And so it's, they're just kind of putting those nodes there, anything, but if there's a private ISP or another ISP, at that point, there would be negotiation around a partnership. Yeah, thank you. In the Gaston Cherry Grove area, so there are some activities. So Coal Pack has retained the consultant Stone Ventures, which is a group out of Chillicothe that works on telecommunications here in Oregon. They're wonderful. Stone Ventures is exploring some of the current grant opportunities. So there's, there's a number of different pots of money focused on broadband from different federal agencies. And this is part of the reason why we did the countywide broadband investment strategy because it's hard to kind of get a good idea of what's, what's all out there. So there's a USDA Connect Grant that is open right now. Stone Ventures is exploring possibilities, pursuing some of those dollars specifically for the Cherry Grove Gaston area. So I have a call with them later on this week to think about what that looks like. Also related to that, Business Oregon is getting closer to releasing one of their grant opportunities. This is BTAP. This is broadband technical assistance provision, maybe? Gosh, what's the P? That grant opportunity is focused on that tech, maybe it's planning, that's focused on the technical assistance and planning in advance of an infrastructure project. So they had a survey which closed last week, which asked communities to submit what they would be proposing for infrastructure, what that might look like. And I submitted on behalf of Washington County with information that we have from our study. And I know that Coal Pack also sent in some information there. So we are, we are prepared for that. I think lastly here, the last thing that I have for you all this morning is we have wrapped up the economics, excuse me, with the the countywide broadband strategy. That is, that is ready and I can share that with, with you all. And again, following a presentation that we had last month, you know, Commissioners have questions about that, we'd be happy to answer those questions. And then also the Economic Development Program, we are in the process of hiring a broadband coordinator right now. Again, there's, there's lots of work to be done around broadband and there's gonna be more grant opportunities that come out later this year and next year. So, so thank you to the board for allocating those funds, those ARPA funds for that broadband coordinator. That's gonna be a huge help. That's gonna provide a lot of capacity for us to be able to get our minds around all of the opportunity here with broadband.
So if I might to reinforce that what I need and I think we need is just to make sure that we are well positioned and that we are mindful of what, if any, policy decisions we need to make sure are in place. And then investment wise, to make sure that we, we, the board, working with Ms. Angie, have, have positioned us financially well so that we can seize grant opportunities. So I just rely upon you to look out for that and make sure that we know how we can advocate on behalf of our community and how we can make sound business decisions on behalf of our community. Beyond that, keep understanding all the technical ins and outs and the gaps and keep putting together the great energized team that you have so that we can give our community the opportunity of, of a bright future.
Great.
A connected bright future, right?
I would just add to that, and I think, I think you're saying this as well, is that making sure that Erin Doyle and our GR team is invested in this and we're, we're ready to support them in any advocacy as well.
We, we work very closely with Erin, her team. Yeah.
Yeah, so and just to add on to the Cherry Grove Gaston thing is we're hoping that the next step is to Hag Lake. So we're not gonna forget Hag Lake because it doesn't have any coverage either. And so all of that's kind of coming together. It's very cool. And then the Highway six stuff. So yeah, great, great. Thank you very much. That, as Kevin has pointed out, I use my five minutes.
No. That was a whole board communication leader.
Gave me a thumbs down.
Commissioner Wiley.
Well, every once in a while. So yeah, I met with.
Morning Commissioner Roger.
Cornelius, the manager, Peter Brandon, last week, just to kind of catch up, find out what's going on in Cornelius. And there's lots of exciting things going on there. He's, you know, obviously they've got budget issues and they've got other issues as well. But you know, he's learning on the run, just like the rest of us, I think.
This is how government works. We've dedicated people to help figure out how we keep communities going.
Right. In reference to what Matt said about Highway six, I did meet with Matt Upden Kelder from Astound, which is Amazon, last week, and, and he was giving me some of that information as well. We have the opportunity, we gotta find locations, but we have the authority to put eight to ten of those sites up and down Highway six, which should, they're three to four miles apart, so that should take us into banks, I think. And so that's, that's pretty cool stuff. Went to the WCBA reception. Pam did a great job with her remarks. I'll let you talk about that. Coal Pack met the new Regional Solutions Coordinator for the North Coast Region, which is Nate Stice. And he's worked for the governor in the North Central Region previous to that. So really good guy. Had lots of good information and it was good to have him at the table. Also, I attended, of course, the Northwest Act that afternoon. And Stacy always does a good job of reporting out what Washington County projects are and things like that. GPI hosted with Diane and Diane, I'll let you respond to that. I think if you're gonna talk about your potential investors that you worked with GPI at Tiger last week when we were there. Or it was, it was just presentation by GPI and then Clean Water Services gave them all a tour and a tour. You know, the tours are very cool. I couldn't go to the tour, but thank you for doing that. And it was very well attended by a variety of folks from Sherwood and Twolleton primarily. I went on the Intel Tour on Saturday. It was their twenty-third iteration is what I'm told, but first time since two thousand and nineteen because of COVID. We had, at nine thirty was a group of electeds from Washington County and City of Hillsborough plus a number of our staff. So it was very cool. Tanya was there, Stephen, a few others, but.
Warm again? Sorry, I missed.
Open house for Intel. We get to go in and put on bunny suits and all that kind of stuff. Yes.
Yep.
So that was very, but then at ten thirty, it opened up to the general public. And when we walked out, there was people everywhere. So I'm guessing several thousand people showed up there. It was, it was really cool. So yeah, this week I have the GPI Board Meeting, meeting with the new Gaston City Councilor. Just a variety of other things. Going to the Piddick Manson Mansion for a STEA meeting, so.
Didn't make it to the goat weigh-in on Saturday.
Is, yeah, it was sheep, wasn't it?
It was goats and sheep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't either because it was gonna be too tight between that and heading off to Intel. So I skipped that, but yeah, I don't like missing those.
And also Commissioner Yamamoto from Tillamook County sent us an invitation to attend a special forum this Sunday, I think it is.
Yes, I'm going down to Tillamook on Sunday night for dinner and their tour on Monday.
Of the seaweed processing plant?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really cool stuff. I don't know if they still use it in McDonald's shakes, but that was, it's a thickener.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I look.
It's quite nutritious. It's used in more than just, you know, Japanese wrapper foods, sushi and whatnot. So. Yeah, I, I won't be able to make that. So.
I'll have your dessert for dinner.
Oh, excellent. Yes, that was very nice of him to extend the invitation. Okay, who would like to go next?
So last week, like everybody, we've been reading budgets, talking about budgets, working on budgets. So that goes without, without saying. I did have a coffee with Mary Manso last week. We talked about the CPO program. She's interested in having a few CPO seven meetings. So I'm, she's working with Amanda on that right now. She also talked to me about the property at one seventy-fourth. It's owned by the Beaverton School District. It's going to be sold. And Megan is doing some research on that piece and what it might mean to us as the county. Let's see, I did attend the WCBA reception and offered the remarks at, at the beginning. The interesting part of that, about that reception, there were about a hundred and eighty people there apparently. It was, it was at the Research Center and it was really the, the connection between tourism and the arts. So it was nice to see that type of, that type of nexus coming together. David Perullo put my remarks together that included a lot of statistics that I wouldn't know otherwise. But one of the most important ones to me was that visitors to Oregon have supported eight thousand three hundred and ninety county jobs. That's a nineteen point three percent increase over two thousand and twenty-one. We all know where we were in two thousand and twenty-one, but nonetheless, that shows what the rebound has been. And I think that that's an important piece. I met with the M-PAC coordinating committee and the topics for the next meeting scheduled for May twenty-fourth include the M-PAC consideration of the MTAC nominees, that's on the consent agenda. The update on the housing needs analysis, that's gonna be given by Ted Reed and DLCD staff. An update on the, well, actually the draft strategy report for the high-capacity transit piece. And you know, the continuing concern there obviously is Highway ninety-nine. So, and then the last thing is the two thousand and twenty-three R-TIP, the project list input and draft systems analysis. I plan on debriefing ahead of that meeting with Jessica Pelts to make sure that I've got the county's position. And I also want to understand what the discussion was at WCC on Monday. So I'll be talking with her about that. And if there's any input that you'd like to give me ahead of the M-PAC meeting, I'm more than happy to take that.
If I might leverage off of the WCBA and tourism. We received a communique from the VP of the new Major League Football. That's trying to get set up to play over here in the Hillsborough Coliseum. And they were inquiring about any grants and whatnot. And I was wondering, I haven't had a chance to send emails for days. Ms. Angie, is it possible for Washington County to either reply to that email, direct the person to connect with David Perullo from WCBA to get connected with the Oregon Sports Authority or whoever it is, travel Oregon and go that route potentially? Wonderful. Thank you very much. Appreciate getting to tie up that loose end.
So I was also unable to attend the PAD meeting and my alternate is you, Chair. And so they were.
Happens every year with budget.
And they're fully aware and everything, everything is, is fine. The on Friday, Roy and I attended the interviews for CWS Chief Utility Operations Officer. And two very good candidates and it was, I, I always appreciate the opportunity to participate in those because I learned about the candidates, but I also learn a lot more about the operations of the organization. So thank you Diane, thank you Mark for including me in that process. This week I have constituent meeting regarding the impact from the Cornell Road Project. And we, Megan has talked with Legal about whether or not I can meet with them, given the situation. I think we're all cleared there and I expect that it will be an opportunity for me to listen. So that's, that's my role there. Ermdeck is this week. Ermdeck and Community Action Board of Directors always overlap, so I'm juggling that piece. I also have the Homeless Plan Advisory Committee and I'm attending the Metro Strategy Session on Community-Based Equity.
Thank you. But before I pick up on that. You mentioned. I moved on. What, what did you say before that?
Homeless Planet Advice?
Yes. Mayor Wenzel complimented Washington County and the work of the LC three with regard to the homeless encampment just north of Forest Grove. So I wanted to pass that on. Yes, the community really appreciates that. On the Metro Strategic Targets, that was the meeting that I asked you guys about a while ago and ended up, nobody else seemed interested, but I'm grateful that the two of you were each plugged in. As far as I know, staff Daniel was working with staff to get some talking points together for me, but I haven't had a chance to connect with them about what was on my mind. So they, they're trying to develop regional five-year strategic outcomes in three focus areas, housing, economy and environment. So breaking that down for housing, from my perspective, continuing to ensure we have a variety of housing styles and price points. There was an economist, I think his name was Richard Florida, who spoke to us as a region. I don't know if you were mayor yet or you were new mayor, maybe in twenty. No, it might have been with two thousand and nine. But he talked about how we needed more flats with middle housing. So I think we need to keep the message focused on middle housing and keep the pressure on the private market for delivering there. On the economy, I was thinking, you know, cities are really the main place where economic development is happening. Metro's role on industrial land, gotta keep reinforcing that. On the environment, transportation options, solid waste, clean water and right down to having the animals at the zoo available for science education and conservation education to instill in everyone of all ages, but especially our kids, that it's a worldwide environment, our ecology is all connected. So, and then of course, how could I forget regional disaster preparedness? I don't know what category to put that in for their outcomes, but you know, it's, it's something that.
You know, we need to be all on the same page.
Yep, yep. So I just thank you for the two of you to also go to that. That is the extent, without hearing anything or participating in the exercises, that was my five minutes of reflection.
Great. And I, I, I make this announcement that the focus of my group is on community-based equity. So if there's anybody else that has input, please make sure.
Oh, there are subgroups.
There, there, yes. And I don't, I'm not sure what.
I had no idea the invitation I got was just to general.
General, yeah.
No, mine's Strategic Targets Visioning Business and Economic Developments.
So it's different. So they're a little different.
They have not communicated.
I was surprised at that as well. So just, but I'm just, because I know what my topic area is, I just want to put that out there in case others from our.
Given the sneaking up.
Council President Peterson, that this is Boobar.
We've been into the military now.
So Chair, my understanding, and, and as you say, the rollout of this information's been sort of piecemeal. But my understanding is that there is an elected officials specifically on the eighteenth, I believe, is the one that you'll.
And the twenty-second.
Yeah.
I was gonna go to the twenty-second, but now I, I'll be out of town.
Oh, mine is the twenty.
Right. And then there were others that were around, I believe, sort of parks and open space. One was sort of a community-based equity focus. One is the business and economic development. And the fourth one escapes me, housing, I believe, more specifically targeted. And so I know that staff members were invited to some sessions, probably the four that were more specific. And then I believe, as I say, there were a couple that were maybe just specifically addressed to certain elected officials.
I realize that I'm unique.
Piecemeal rollout.
I'm a county commissioner after having served as a metro counselor.
And our understanding is the, the activities being led in the council office, not, not so much through the departments at this point.
So so we need to send a staff person in my place then on the twenty-second. They invited either electeds or a staff person, needs to be a senior-level staff person. Probably yourself, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Roberts, or, you know, or Mr. Craigie or somebody who can touch on housing economy and the environment. And I'm happy to give you my chicken scratch notes if that helps.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Do you like them right now?
You can sure. Notes? We pass notes? All right.
Let me take a look first.
It's gonna give me a. Thank you Commissioner Threes. Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Phi? Are you done?
Yes. Okay, I, I can go.
Good morning, everyone. We had a, a really good J-PAC and Metro Council Workshop on Transportation and RTP. It's really just to discuss more together, the technical analysis. Kim Ellis and Elliot did a really great job of just focusing on the details and the outcomes in the report. And then they had a, a community report, report on community priorities. And that was really a good to hear what the community prioritized in terms of their output or outcome they're looking forward. The group discussion focused on what observations do you have about the proposed set of investments? And what questions and concerns do you have? And then the other question the group were posed to, how can the proposed set of investment be improved to best align with our regional goals and community priorities, particularly in the near term? And that was a lot of discussion around changing the outcomes and how the outcomes could relate to specific jurisdictions. And no surprise, displacement came and obviously with the semiconductor potential for Washington County, Forest Grove and North Plains, potential displacement in the future came that discussion. So I think the staff were in the room and took a lot of notes and we're providing feedback on.
What, what is this assumption about displacement? Displacing what? So farm, farmland?
Not farmland, potential future people that may or may not be moving in those cities and the current population that live in those cities, if more people move in. So I, I think it's just learning some of the lessons that happened within Montloma County and, and foreseeing that. So it wasn't more of displacement is coming in Washington County. What do you have plans of? Sort of like, hey, you know, there are a lot of lessons learned, look into it now that the semiconductor is coming to your district. So it was an interesting.
Yes. Foregone conclusion. And North Plains is today's election day. And Maryland man was is wondering if their public safety levy is going to pass since right now they don't have the funds for patrol between the hours of ten PM and seven AM. So it's like, okay, you want to be the site of a major chip manufacturer, but your community struggles already.
Yeah, so it was. Yeah, we didn't, I don't think we added, I think the people mentioning, there's, there's a lot of contacts to deliver around Washington County. But it was nonetheless too interesting to hear. And then yesterday was WCCC. We also talked about the R-one Act nominations. We have two Washington County stakeholder positions on the R-one Act expiring at the end of June. So there were two nominations that were sent from WCCC. We also talked about the regional high capacity.
What were the, who were the nominations?
The mayor from Forest Grove, oh no, yeah, Forest Grove.
Mayor Wenzel.
Mayor Wenzel. And a council from Sherwood asked to be nominated, not nomination brought forward.
Yeah, Kim Armstrong.
Kim Young, right, yes.
So two people.
And it was unanimous. There were no other nominations. What else? We, we talked about the regional high-capacity transit strategy update. Everyone expressed their disappointment of W ninety-nine. Uh, everyone expressed their disappointment of W ninety-nine W not being tier one. So we keep pushing that narrative and we'll keep working with metro staff to try to elevate that. Uh, it's currently uh in tier four. So and uh you.
What changed in the criteria to push it down?
Steven, you wanna provide some context on that? I think uh one thing I learned is from two thousand nine, it keeps moving down ninety-nine W, so.
Yeah, the the readiness criteria that were used by Metro or the criteria used by Metro, a lot of it really focused around readiness. So some some elements of the writers, current writership, potential for future writership, land use and zoning. Um, just sort of um, you know, essentially that that kind of readiness for a community to be able to sustain, if you will, a um high-capacity transit line. And so the feeling is based on those evaluation criteria, the highway ninety-nine does not rise to the top. And so uh the metro staff person yesterday did suggest a few things that could be done, just thinking about implementing transit-oriented zoning. Are there other land use changes, development incentives, things that would help facilitate more growth in the corridor that would uh potentially provide for a sustained high-capacity transit. And then the near term, perhaps opportunities to just think about better bus type services and improvements to the existing transit service without investments of a a true high-capacity line.
What would, what activity would pull together the multiple jurisdictions around an extent?
I think a corridor plan is a great idea, and that's been kicked around for a few years now. And so I do think that if the if the jurisdictions are able to work together to develop a kind of corridor planning strategy, that would go a long way towards uh in demonstrating a a readiness and a willingness from all the local partners to help facilitate that.
Does Washington County and therefore WCCC need to think about self-initiating a corridor plan, or at least the building blocks and funding that perhaps as a project through FSTIP?
An interesting idea. I I believe there's been some application made perhaps the TGM program. I'll have to go back. Chris, Chris had all this right here uh and would know that, but I'd have to go back and take a look.
I remember back, I remember back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, there was a highway ninety-nine W planning effort, but it's been almost two decades, so.
We've also, we it wasn't that long ago that Get Moving Twenty Twenty had trouble elevating ninety-nine W as well, so this is not.
Everybody's gonna stay in their cars until there's better transit. There's not gonna be better transit until there's better ridership and land use changes and there's not gonna be redevelopment if there's no opportunity. So it's all this chicken and egg problem.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why I'm trying to identify where there might be some movement, some investment to spur some change.
Those are good notes. Thank you both.
And that that was one of the question I posed through the our staff. What funding exists to do the corridor planning? To Metro and to better bus. So we'll see if there's any they bite on and there is some funding.
I'm not waiting for them. I'm saying within Washington County, what do we need to start initiating for collaboration with jurisdictions? That's all. Potentially.
Great.
Not that you need more on your plate.
Right, we were looking for something to do.
Yes.
And I were concerned about next week.
And I did want to note, uh, you mentioned a study that was done, I think in the kind of the two thousand timeframe, mid two thousands uh along highway ninety-nine. It really was transportation-focused and had a number of roadway improvements. So we went back and checked that a few years ago, probably during the twenty-twenty measure run-up. And actually, almost all of those improvements had been done, except for, I think, uh, making ninety-nine W three lanes going towards Portland. So just about everything else had been taken care of that was identified back in that plan.
I think it was Tiger did make improvements uh on the part east, that's east, east of two seventeen.
Yes, uh, in conjunction with the Walmart approval, actually, they leveraged element approval to a lot of roadway.
Further up the roadway too, new new sidewalks, medians, trees.
Yep, yep, you can thank Walmart.
Walmart again though.
Yeah, but still Tiger did the work.
Yes, absolutely.
Washington County helped too, so it was a dog.
And of course.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
And by the way, yes, your brain just remembered that, so give yourself a little more credit.
It takes us a lot longer for that to come back around than.
Sorry, Commissioner Phi.
It's okay. No, this is really good discussion. Um, and I think Stephen walked away with a couple of action items. Find some funding and now we have a, I think it's a good. And then so just to move those along, I think I might be running out of time, but um J-PAC is this week. I will send you, uh, there are a couple of action items. First one is super easy. Our staff is recommending approval for this. It's the Metro Unified Planning Work Program. And the other action item uh uh on J-PAC agenda is the uh on carbon reduction program funding allocation, T-PAC recommended a package, which is package E. Uh, this is what uh it's our staff is recommending. I want you to take a look, uh, see if you feel comfortable. Um, and I'll send you the notes from our staff, why they're supportive of that package.
I would recommend that if you want us to take a look and provide you input, that it be programmed in as a work session. I don't know about anybody else, but it's like we only have twenty-four hours in a day and if it doesn't come here, not gonna look at it.
Hmm, okay, mental note for future uh good idea, but I think this this time I would kindly ask you to just review on email and and provide.
Won't get anything from me.
Okay, uh, the rest of you. There's four of us, so we'll carry forward, Chair. I think it's a good package. I think of the staff really, um, you'll be happy, the the analysis they provided, why supporting that package.
Look out for unfunded mandates.
Yes. Hundred percent. Um, and then there are a couple of action items on um. Yeah, there there, you know, I hear every, I think I heard it on our board and to 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 be fair to our chair, I heard it from you, from you first, unfunded mandate. Now everywhere I go, I hear unfunded mandate. So you, I think uh you mobilized everyone. Credit, credit Chair Smith to do some of that, because now I hear everywhere, where's the unfunded mandate? And let's bring that magnifying glass to find it, so. And and then this week I have the, I'm participating along with our own very uh Latricia Tillman, um, the Hillsborough Youth Advisory Council Youth Voices event this week, and I'm looking forward, it's my first time, I think, or second time participating. Um, and it's gonna be in the Hidden Creek. Last time I participated was online, so I look forward to um. It's a full-day event, but my portion is a few hours, so I don't think I'll spend the whole day, but I look forward to being part of that event. And uh Hidden Creek, by the way, it's an amazing place. It's a new treasure that my kids and I are very fond of. And with that, I turn it to your.
Steven's crew was just at the, can't remember if it was the Tigered or Tuolotin Youth Advisory Committee on transportation.
Oh. In Creek?
No, Tiger.
Tiger to our.
Well, I appreciate the conversation, at least from two of you. That it's been a long time. We talked about ninety-nine W. It's uh, it's very difficult, as you know, because our business is budding the highway and that's why things have never expanded a whole lot, because if you're gonna try and move it back billions and billions and billions, so I like high capacity transit, just a thought. Here's a way that we, uh, there's something we ought to consider, Stephen, and I've always thought that we ought to admit before. Why couldn't we be our own transit district contract with TriMet? And TriMet would be an overlay anyway. And dip into that twenty-seventeen money and sort of that maybe, I don't know how if we can do it or not. That may be some of the funding that you're chatting about today. I know everybody's carving up the state with these districts and they're getting an allocation to separate from others, and so I I don't know whether we're taking away kind of like gas tax or not, but just just a thought. This week, uh, I have a a meeting, uh, WA there. Land use transportation, they're meeting with the uh e- economic development person from North Plains, as a matter of fact.
Bill Reed.
Bill Reed, yeah. Yeah, thank you, you know, welcome. Yeah, so be interesting. Then I have a meeting with twelve to open. I usually talk about local quality issues. I never send me the agendas. I can't tell you what it's about. Met with the clean water with Pam. Uh, I wanted to say, Pam, you 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 come at things at a different angle than I do, which is her strength. Um, i- i- you're looking at the personnel traits. I'm always saying, can you do the job? Are you smart enough, quick enough, fast enough? And that that's my strength, so I I appreciated hearing yours, but uh.
Good balance.
It's it is, it was really a good balance. I I I want to compliment you on that. I thought that was very good.
Right back at you.
Oh, well, you're very kind. Um, and beyond that, I think nothing more than to say that I think Chair on the fifth of June, there's going to be at least three of us out, so we should look at that Tuesday meeting.
I don't know what the rolling agenda says.
Oh, yeah, J-PAC, that that was on my notes. J-PAC trip is on, I know I'm brushed through. J-PAC trip is on um June fifth to June eighth.
June fifth on in Southeast Asia.
Oh, that's it.
Let's just run the show.
We could.
You two both going on the J-PAC trip?
Asked me to do, yeah. Asked me to do it, I said, okay.
You're talking about the sixth of June.
Okay, I'm sorry, whatever date that is.
We're leaving the fifth, so that Tuesday we're out, but.
Newsflash, you're not having meetings on Tuesday, June sixth. Was that programmed in already as not happening?
No, we just didn't have the confirmation of Commissioner Rogers, so now we do, so I will handle.
Thank you for raising it.
So I, just respectfully, I would say maybe we take a work session and make that a meeting, something. Are you back up?
I'm back on the twelfth, which is a Monday, so the thirteenth, yes, I'll be back. I don't know what you're mentioning.
Well, maybe instead of having a work session, because that we are a meeting that.
Oh, a board meeting?
Yeah.
Staff, staff will look, staff will look at the rolling agenda and work this out.
Well, I just would rather raise it now and come about two weeks.
Staff will work on this today.
Yeah, yeah.
And my only other question that I'm really perplexed about, what Boombah?
Oh, I'll I'll do it offline.
All right, I have no idea what you were saying.
Yep, no worries. Okay, moving right along. Booba, I heard, no, never mind, never mind. Last week continued all but all the time with the exception of my attending the Metro SHS TCVP meeting. Uh, where we finally addressed the last goal area and agreed to recommendations there. So beyond that, uh, I've been uh working on some planning next steps with Diane and Tanya uh for us as the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Directors. And what it means is, I think we're, uh, while I had expected we would have some visibility into post-budget for our June roundtable, we won't have that. So the roundtable on June first, I keep getting the date wrong, so she keeps correcting me. June first, uh, will be short. Uh, given that we have a public hearing that date, I think we'll go back to suggesting that we only meet in the afternoon of June first instead of morning with a gap. And does that help with regard to your schedule?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so so June first, we're not gonna hold the morning roundtable.
Right, okay.
Right, and I think we could probably even meet at two instead of one. After my performance today, I'll put that on my. I was here early thinking.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yeah, we, well, we just, we just switched it over a couple of years ago, so you know.
So um, great. I have a meeting with Mayor Wheeler um coming up and it's the need is pretty vague, but I think it has to do with his latest proposal of pushing back on everybody around the city of Portland on fees and taxes and also his deciding that or proposing that the city of Portland should not raise any fees and taxes. Uh, perhaps you've seen the press article on that. From my standpoint, we've already done that, right? Both as Washington County and Clean Water Services, so I'll be carrying that message to him and also reinforcing that we have a few regional programs that are vital. Or addressing our shared societal uh challenges, affordable housing and homelessness. And uh at this juncture, we would be in a bad way if we didn't have those, so um, so we'll see how that goes. Then just another comment, uh, we had a constituent letter about traffic in on Miller Hill Road in Aloha. And I took a look at that and uh Mr. Roberts, I'm actually glad you're here to hear it. It's no different to through street than uh what we have. You know, it's a, it's a street west of a hundred and eighty-fifth Farmington and Gassner. And it's not unlike Southwest Hart Road or Southwest Sorrento Road uh to Brockman in Beaverton or Banny Hart, so.
That's not you.
Yeah, and so I think we might, it's just community and community development, so um I just wanted to to raise that, that folks may not like the fact that they live in a connected community, but that's what being part of a community is.
And uh we'll we'll prepare a response for the constituent in writing to follow up on. And I do know that uh there are some sidewalk projects that are in the works on Miller Hill Road. The county has a sidewalk gap project and there's a pending development that will construct a missing piece of sidewalk. So the the there are incremental improvements being made on that roadway. It is narrow and it is steep and it does have a curve uh in it, and so.
And it is in the UUA, so it doesn't have the benefit of other city programs.
Right, right. So so there are incremental improvements being made and we understand there are some needs there. And I've asked the team to just take a look and see if there are some incremental sort of safety, um, things we can do with markers and delineators, things like that.
Thank you. Oh, uh, and back on the roundtable, I neglected, I only spoke to how we're not gonna have the planning information in June. Uh, instead, the September roundtable. So uh, I would appreciate you're all looking at the rolling agenda calendar for the that forward date, because I remember, was it last year or the year before, we repositioned the September roundtable? I think because of some need, you might have had Commissioner Willie, so we changed it. No, no, it wasn't our trip. Uh, well, it could have been, but anyway, I just want to make sure it's gonna be really important that all five of us are available in person for that meeting. Our staff will.
Thursday of September, is that who you're referring to?
Usually the Thursday. And sometimes Labor Day moves date-wise, so I don't know if it'll be before Labor Day or after Labor Day, so, okay, that's it from me. Oh, and thank you very much uh for covering the board meeting next Tuesday. I'll be back east moving my mom. Everything's going well there. But on this trip, no meetings whatsoever, so I'll be away Sunday through Wednesday.
Got to take care of business.
Good deal.
Yeah.
And if an earthquake happens, I know you all do the right thing and I'll do my best.
We'll miss you drastically. Catherine knew this, how did she know this?
We gotta get you off this earthquake.
Well, it's the theme of. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Leadership communication. Don't worry if we don't get to all of it before our business meeting, we'll come back to it. But would you mind if we did Diane first?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning Board of Clean Water Services. But we really want to thank Directors Teresa Rogers for participating on our panel for the Chief Utility Operations Officer. Their insight really helped the rest of the panel and we look forward to making an announcement probably on Friday. GPI came to visit as Director Willie said, and they had a tour of the Durham facility and, and thank you for that. And we shared that water is a strategic advantage to locating in Washington County for industries that are growing and locating in this region, especially as compared to other locations in the US that are really struggling with water supply. We also discussed the importance of having infrastructure agencies be part of a very early strategic discussion and citing and growth planning and that Clean Water Services, for example, it takes about four years from started design to delivering major conveyance and treatment capacity. So it really helps us with this advanced planning. And we are ready to serve with existing incremental capacity and we like planning for additional increments to make sure our rates remain affordable in the region. But thank you. I think they enjoyed the tour. You're probably shocked at how big the treatment facilities are.
Well, and yeah, they got, they kind of got the abbreviated tour because they only had like forty five minutes or something like that. But yeah, it's good. We had some private sector folks there as well. So it's good that they get to see a little bit of inside what goes on at Clean Water Services.
Wondering, based on that, if, if the, what was the State Joint Committee on Semiconductor Task Force? You know, Senator Lieber, Rep Pham, what was it? There were, anyway, that delegation might find that really useful as well.
And we have provided a briefing to Senator Solomon on this as well.
Yeah, but see, seeing is believing.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's our district.
Yeah. We were going to be looking at the board calendar, board learning. And I know the board is very busy with Washington County businesses. The Chair really identified we're going to have to be very creative and, and pre-plan things, so.
Well, also I was wondering, colleagues, it's been a while since, and I'm not sure if I've gotten a tour as a commission member of the Rock Creek Plan. And it's been a while since I was there as a community member. Would anyone else be interested in a tour this summer?
If we could get it on the calendar, I would, because I haven't been there.
I haven't been there and those tours are always so impactful. I would, I would like that.
And we're bringing back our community tours this summer at both of our large facilities. So I mean, maybe there'd be an opportunity to just join.
Yeah.
The community, we run them during the day and in the evenings.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Could you send us another email on that? So we can try and build around that. That'd be great. Thank you. Would we ruin, would I ruin a community tour though, since I ask so many questions?
It'd be fun.
It'd be good modeling.
Sorry, naturally self critical. I was gonna say, is that a real question?
Carefully.
As long as she submits in advance and triplicate.
Yeah, sorry. Mark's gonna have a lot of fun with that one. Mark gotta work on his poker face.
Yes.
Today on the agenda, the board will be charging Seawag with two things. One is to work on the West Basin Master Plan and our Climate Action Plan with us. I know they're really excited to do that with us and we'll be looping back with the board to, to talk with each of you about that. But they're just very excited about working on that.
Oh, it's combined. Got it.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. There's something very special about item G one that I wanted to highlight with Mark. Twenty twenty four marks our twenty years of partnership with the Tuolton Soil and Water Conservation District and the partnership with Clean Water Services to enhance watershed health on the privately owned agricultural lands throughout Washington County. And I really want to recognize Rich Hunter and his team's work with the Soil and Water Conservation District. But Mark, folks are coming, aren't they?
So today's presentation will be done by Rich, together with Lacey Townsend, who's the Executive Director, and Aaron Shaw, who's the Director of Natural Resources, and their Board of Directors will also be joining us today. So we'd like to get, I have an opportunity to take a picture after, after that. As you recall, in April of twenty three, uh, twenty two, on a beautiful day, we were out on a blueberry farm over in Cornelius with that same board, and this is kind of the follow-up piece. So they're excited to be here with us. I do too. It's just, it was terrific. You may have even seen some pictures in, in Rich's presentation today, that day. So, thank you.
And my final item is on our performance excellence work with Baldridge and our departmental and our programmatic roadmaps. The team was so excited to share with the board what they created. But we want to make sure that it has the front end of the community portion and engagement and, and kind of the synopsis and synthesis of, of it. So the team's going to be working on that and we'll talk to each of the board members about what you need to make that more accessible to each of you. So we're going to be working on that moving forward. But thank you. And just a lot going on. And Clean Water Services has some pretty big policy issues coming forward that we're going to need to schedule with the board. So the IGA discussions with Hillsborough and Beaverton are going very well with the staff. But we, we need to talk about how the board is engaged with the city councils. So we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks.
And with those department and program roadmaps and bringing them to life, I do realize that in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we had some extended work sessions rather than just waiting for learning days. And so there may be an opportunity there, or if we need to capture time in, say, the September roundtable. Just to bring it to life and help set the stage with what you were talking about with the staff and the overlay, that might help.
That sounds really great. So Mark and I will work with Tanya looking at the schedule. So, thank you.
Could we, since we have a board meeting at ten, can we come back at one o'clock and do the board leadership then?
Absolutely. I'll be here.
Thank you. Or if, you know, well, no, if the board meeting doesn't take so long, oh, well, that's just fine. Oh, and just a heads up, Mr. Munn, Greg Munn, our CFO, helped me validate my financial numbers in my budget amendments. And the ask was for all of us to submit our amendments by noon today. I'm not going to be able to update all my sheets, but I can update the numbers and reissue my summary sheet. Maybe by one, but I think that's the best I can do.
As we're already, keep trying, just adjusting.
Yes.
So I don't, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, well, the noon really doesn't apply to yours, but anybody else's it would, well.
Here I've been.
Oh, maybe.
Putting pressure on my.
Tony has a different idea. I'll shut up.
Um, so Mr. Munn did meet with you, Chair, as you indicated yesterday afternoon. So he understands what some of those adjustments are going to be coming forward. So that's helpful. We do want to, we do need to stay with that noon deadline. So one o'clock is fine. But this is part of us putting a process in place so that we are ready for your Budget Committee meeting on Thursday. So thank you for raising that. Yep.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Have we received additional amendments?
I have received.
But you and the visa together did one? Okay.
And that's all to my knowledge. That's all to my knowledge. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll, we'll pause our work session until one o'clock and head off to the auditorium. Oh, dang it. I forgot to mention through the GR memo, Ms. Doyle, I haven't had time to send this meeting. She mentioned the Joint Committee on Tax Expenditures. And I could find no such committee. So maybe if somebody could connect with her and bring that in for one o'clock, that would help. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Martinez will connect with Erin Doyle.
Thank you.